Seven o'clock, Monday, October 22, 2018. Call the study session for the Waverly City Council to order. The chairman of roll call, please.
Okay.
Here.
Angus.
Present.
Angus.
Here.
Mackenzie.
Here.
Rafia's absent. Cher.
Present.
And Watson. Here.
And our guest council person, Chris, is back for her.
Hello. My final.
Final time?
Stand.
Very good. Welcome to all of you that are here as visitors and guests. And we'll see if there's someone that has some things to say before we get too far here. So, to entertain the motion, approve the agenda?
Still moved.
Seconded.
Then the motion moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion's agenda's approved. Six, zero, one absent. Next item is public comments for items that are not on the agenda. Anyone here that has some things that they'd like to talk about? Very good. You would step up to the mic and speak clearly. Give us your name and address.
My name is Michelle Chavez. I live at 408 Brown Lane here in Waverly with my husband Miguel. We've been living here for just about four years. We moved here because of the excellent school district and the fact that the community is a very safe community with very low crime. So, you know, we can go about our day without much worry about anybody bothering us or our four children, ranging in age from currently nineteen down to two. We both work down in the south side of Waterloo, so we commute 24 miles each way every day. And we, since we live on Brown Lane, we have to go through the heart of Waverly to get to and from work. The past few years, we've had a lot of construction and a lot of headaches from that construction. And now that the construction on Bremer Avenue is starting to come to a close, I have, we've been quite dismayed to see that the city is now implementing this road diet. Before, we lived up here, I worked down in Des Moines and used to go up and down Ingersoll Avenue there. They, before, we moved up here, went from a four-lane road through there, down to a road diet with three lanes. And they didn't have any construction going on. And once they implemented that road diet, not only did the traffic flow get worse, they had several businesses that shut down. Now, I know that in Waverly, you're still finishing up your construction, and I know it's supposed to get better, but we've already had a lot of businesses that have taken a hit financially from all the construction. From what I've seen in the past with road diets is that it's going to continue to harm the businesses. We've lost at least one business on, business that's had to actually shut down on Bremer Avenue downtown. We've had multiple businesses move out of downtown. I don't know how many of those were primarily due to the past flooding in the past or were due to all the construction, but, I mean, I can just kind of see, foresee that there's going to be, you know, more problems in the future because of people wanting to avoid downtown because nobody wants to be caught up in a traffic jam. Pretty much every day when I come home from work, I get back to town a little after five o'clock, and today was no different. The back, traffic was backed up from First Avenue just out, just south of here, all the way beyond First Avenue, First Street West, and, you know, over in front of, it was backed up in front of Fairway. I, I used to be, I could take that middle lane and turn left onto First Street and go past here to go home. I couldn't do that today because now that middle lane is shut down to make that, make that center lane. So, all it's going to do is keep getting worse and worse when we keep having it down to one lane of through traffic in each direction. So, I would respectfully request that the city council reconsider this whole road diet idea because it's not going to work for Waverly. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. But the only answer that I can give is give us a chance. And it may work and it may not. And one group will be able to stand back someday and say, "I told you so." But until then, and hopefully, once all the traffic signals are working better than they are and flashing and everything, we'll see some, see some good things happen. But we'll just have to play it out and go from there.
Can I just add a word, too?
Sure.
You know, there's going to be a period of adjustment, I think. It's not, you know, once all the barriers get down and everything will be a normal situation, there's going to be a period of a number of weeks, if not months, where people are going to be adjusting their traffic patterns. You know, the city will be adjusting the timing on the lights, you know, and be looking at how things actually operate. So, you know, I hope that people, both those who support it and those who opposed the road diet, will, you know, be patient, do their best to make it work. And if it doesn't work, we'll certainly revisit it. But it's one of those things where, you know, once the barriers come down, hopefully this week, it's, there's still going to be a lot of adjustment that's going to happen. So, you know, I thank everybody for your patience in all these last couple of years of the road construction, but this is going to be a learning process for all of us. So, you know, let's, let's work on this together. Let's try to get through it together. Thank you.
Thanks, Rod. Anyone else have some comments for an item not on the agenda?
Myron Peterson, 305 Birch Avenue. Is that third lane that is marked tonight bike lane?
The narrow space between the parking and, and the travel lane?
Yes.
It's not a designated bike lane?
Okay.
So...
Because that, that would be a total disaster with the white equipment and the combines and the tractors and stuff that come through here. That would be an instant death. The other question that I have is, do, did any of you council members look at the traffic as the lady was talking about tonight and see it backed up for seven, eight, nine blocks? And have any of you looked at the traffic in the last eight, 10 weeks during about four o'clock, 4:30 to 5:00, with two lanes?
I have. I've traveled that, those, that corridor various, several times during the day for a lot of reasons, and I've...
I've traveled it several times sometimes.
Yeah.
And it's totally ridiculous that we have cars backed up for eight, nine blocks. I know for a fact that you take, well, we'll just use a big city for an example. San Francisco didn't, when they didn't have enough roads for four lanes, they sure as heck didn't go back to three. They went to 12. And I'm still very confident that this was a wrong decision, but I know that, that it's been made and that you're going to live with it. We have to live with it, so...
We'll live with it until we can figure out whether we did the right thing or not.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not cast in stone to the point that it can't be changed down the road?
Well, the DOT man said that, from what I read in the paper, that it was going to cost buku dollars to change the markings again because these were permanent markings.
It's just paint. They're not ground in like they wanted to do initially. It's just paint.
Okay.
It'll come off a little harder than the one on, obviously, but it can be removed.
Okay. Thanks for your time.
You bet. Thank you.
My name's Miguel Chavez. I live at 408 Brown Lane, and I, we, I work in Waterloo. So, my choices when I drive to work are to either go on First west of the river or First east of the river. I don't have much choices. I could go north and go all the way around town to avoid everything, but that would be considerably more miles. What I see is that there's not going to alleviate. I see a lot of people getting very frustrated with the congestion that's happening on First on the west side of the river. There's people that will go out there and just park in the middle of the intersection. And until they get their opportunity to squeeze in, I do not see that getting easier when we have the traffic flowing. Just because when we had both lanes and all the cars were filled in, you know, all the cars were in their space, we still were backed up. And even today, I'm off this week. I came home, I did some errands and came back, and at 4:30, it was already backed up, and there were cars in front of me that were jumping out in the intersection to force, insist on them being next to get into that lane in Bremer. Not only is it unsafe, which is part of the reason why you guys are trying to do the road diet, but it's, it just leads to a lot of frustration and road rage and things like that, which are not healthy. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else that has something that's not on the agenda? See none, we'll move on. First item of study session calendar is discussion on the billing process for those with extensive or extended, might be a better word, vacation from their address. James, you want to give us a little bit?
Yes, sir. I don't know if the wording is exactly what we were wanting, but we're basically talking about snowbirds for the majority, not all the time, but the majority of it where you have individuals that will leave in the fall, winter, and then come back in the spring. And I know it's been discussed before council as well, but we have new council members, we might as well let them discuss it, too. The city at this time charges a minimum fee regardless of what usage you have for a variety of our utilities. And some of the discussions have been had and requested by some individuals and should we look at charging that or not when you vacate your home, as you said, for an extended time, whether it be 30 days, 60 days. And, and that's kind of what's before you today is your philosophy on should that be continuing or should it not? I understand the reasoning behind why they would not want to pay the minimum due each month, your base fee, without any additional for usage, but yet there's also reasons that we do have that. You know, we have overhead to maintain it regardless of if they're there or not, and we have, it's not an uncommon practice to have that, whether it be for utilities, electricity, or any other item, whether water, sewer, solid waste. So, the, just the discussion tonight was to let you have some time to just talk amongst yourselves, and we'll certainly answer any questions we can on your opinion of should we, as a city, continue to charge the minimum base for individuals that have gone for a number of months, or should we not charge that minimum base? And so I guess that's a very brief summary of what we're talking about, but I'll kind of open it up to any council comments, as we've kind of given you a gist of it.
What is the fee?
It depends on each of the items. Water is $10.50 is the base fee. Sewer is $12.45. Your garbage is $9.75. So, about $32 for the three per month as a base fee.
On top of that, I think an individual shared a Waverly utility bill, and I think it was $36, just basically a meter charge. So, you know, you're approaching $100 a month for folks, with some other fees and that type of thing, so...
So, how did you get from $36 to 100, or $33 to 100?
$75, I guess. If you've got 36 from the Waverly utilities for electric...
Oh, okay.
If I did the quick math that you, that James just gave, there's another 35, so $65, $70.
Yeah, I was just looking at water, sewer, garbage. But yeah, electric utilities or their cable utilities or, like I said, everybody has these fees, so I could see it being $100, and yes, if you have all those.
Yeah.
It's also the same. It's $11, I think.
I believe so.
I mean, I would like to see this on here because it's something I've been bringing up the last couple of years, and my understanding was some of it was limitations in the billing system that we had, that it would be hard to manage. I think the current practice is if they pull their water meter and bring it in, you make some adjustments, but that seems to be a lot of effort. Yeah, I'd be interested to see what everybody else has to say.
So, James, do we, do we have a good fix on how many folks would fall into this category?
I don't know off the top of my head. Jenny, I don't know in the past if you've had any idea of where it may fall?
No, I can't say.
Because it could be a month to four months, to different people, different reasons may leave, may come back. It's hard to pinpoint exactly how many we're talking about.
I guess I'd suggest that if it wasn't a great number, I'd be more sympathetic to waiving it, but if you're talking about a lot of people, maybe not. Maybe a reduced amount would be something to think about.
Now, when people say leave town like this, do they kind of shut off their water or somehow shut off their gas, or is it just they're not using it? It could be both. You could shut off your water meter, I guess. You could shut off your gas. You could... I mean, because in some sense, I mean, the city is still responsible for making sure that that gas or that water, whatever, is right there at, you know, the entrance to their house, even if they're not using it. Correct. So that if they, you know, oh, they've got a friend who needs a place to stay, they can give out their key, and then suddenly their friend is there using the water, the gas and whatnot, or, you know, the sewer. So, in some sense, as long as we are providing, you know, that ready access, it makes sense that we should be provide, you know, we should be charging a fee for that. However, the moment that they can kind of shut it off and say, "No, I guarantee," that they're not going to be using that water or sewer, and they're going to have to go through a process to turn it back on, then I could see where it might be worth it to kind of have some sort of reduced or waived fee. But as long as we're kind of providing that service at the ready for the moment they want it, I think that the fee seems justified.
If you turn the meter in, then the fees are waived for water, sewer, and garbage.
Okay. What do you mean, turn the, turn the meter in, like detach it from your house and bring it in? Have a plumber unhook it, bring it to the city. The fees are then voided, but you have to have a plumber go put it back on, and of course, that's not free either way. So, some cities do charge a detach fee and a hookup fee, and we don't happen to do that. I don't know if I believe probably electric, I would assume, would do that. Your cable utilities, I don't think you can shut those off and turn them on month to month. You know, we're certainly not out of the norm by any means, but again, just wanted to bring it forward to see what your thoughts are on that.
I guess I would like to see numbers in terms of how many we would be looking at, and then considerations that would have to go into that be, you know, would probably include looking at rental places, too. Somebody has a rental property that isn't being rented, do they have the ability to shut off and not pay a fee for that?
Right.
Yeah. We, so, we have options. We have options for the water, for the sewer, for the solid waste. So, the city does provide options for all of those. Those do come at a cost, and, and they're, they're very, I, I think they're relatively small nominal costs. So, to avoid paying, you know, if, if you're a snowbird going to your second house, whether it's Arizona, Florida, or whatever, and you don't want to pay for the tipping fee portion of your garbage, you can turn the container in. We will come pick up your garbage and recycling container, and then we will return them when you come back and ask for them back. It's $25, okay? We will collect the container, hold it for you, and then return it for when you get back.
A flat fee of $25.
$25, right. Now, you will still pay the base fee, which covers the recycling center, the yard waste operations, personnel, capital equipment, help support those as well. You can have that waived if the water meter is effectively turned in, okay? If we start waiving those fees, is it for a month, is it for two months, four months? You know, you go on vacation for a week. Don't, you know, I should proportionately not be billed for my water and sewer, but we're still providing all the infrastructure. We're still providing you fire protection. So, those are incorporated into these base fees. The city of Waverly, for your water, sewer, and solid waste services, does not charge you for, to sign up for those services or to discontinue those services. But we do have a relatively small fee for discontinuation of services. And I think it's relatively small compared to other, well, other utilities, cable company, phone company, what they would charge for discontinuation of service for a month, two months, four months. If we start waiving those, they're going to have to be effectively supported by those of us that stay. Okay? So, this topic, this discussion, is not new. It goes back decades. This is probably the third time since I've been here that it's been brought up, and I know that it was, well, Dick Crane and Jack Bachuber were here in the 90s when, I think, the first time it came up. And these were the same discussion points that were brought up then, still exist today. It is a policy decision. You can choose to suspend them, whatever charges you want. But those are the, kind of the, the basis for the discussion, the rationale for having minimum charges, for having some nominal fees if you do want to suspend service. So, don't know if that helped.
So, what, what we're talking about here really isn't a discontinuation of service. Nothing is actually going to change from the connections to the, to the property, it's just simply that we would not be billing them for a period of time.
It'd be a suspension of, I guess, various...
But if somebody came, so, so how this would happen, somebody would call in and say, "I'm going to be gone from December 15th to February 15th. I don't want to be billed for that period of time." We wouldn't, the city would not actually do anything. We simply wouldn't bill them for that two-month period of time. Is that correct?
Well, I think we'd have to collect the garbage container and the recycling container.
Right.
So, we would have those costs that would be picked up by the city to do that. Otherwise, you could say you're gone, not be charged, and still set your containers out.
Mm-hmm.
With the water, so if all the infrastructure's there and the water meter's there...
So, somebody came back, my example, okay, somebody said, "I'm going to be gone from December 15th to February 15th." And they, they came back January 31st instead, so they came back two weeks early, never told anybody. They would basically have those utility, the, the water and sewer, for whatever they used for two weeks for free then.
I'm not exactly sure how that would work. I mean, they'd have consumption that would show up on the water meter if, if that infrastructure was left in place. So, if, you know, and then you get in, what's the billing cycle? Are they splitting the billing cycle, and how do we proportion that out? So, if, if the billing is done, I mean, we'd have to send people out or do a readout and then a read-in on those, on those bills, and then you'd have to monitor to see if there was use in between your December 15th and February 15th.
Well, I definitely think we need to set some kind of a minimum vacation. I mean, as Mike said, if someone's going to be gone for a week, that doesn't really seem like it would make sense to just kind of, you know, waive that much of the fee. It would seem like you'd have to be gone for at least, you know, three, four months before we would consider, you know, any sort of reduced fee. I actually think if we were to do something like this, it would make most sense to do it kind of a rebate after the fact, where if we can kind of look at someone's bill where, okay, for three months, you didn't use anything, that we can go back and find some way to rebate that cost. That would seem to be the most practical way to do it. But I also think, you know, it's a policy decision that we have to make, whether we think it's a good idea or not. But I, I do think it'd also be nice to have some sense of how many homes would be affected by this before you really spend too much time worrying about it.
I think we need a whole lot more information than that myself. I mean, I think, I, I mean, these are the kinds of things I would like to know if we're in fact going to pursue anything. In addition to what you said, any consideration or reconsideration, in addition to knowing how many people are in this situation, I'd like to know how many people are complaining about it. I'd like to know, how did we arrive at the fees where they currently are? You know, what was the rationale for that? How much revenue is generated from that, and what is the expense structure associated with it? And I'd, I'd also like to know that if we changed anything along the lines of what we're talking about potentially, let's say we worked out some plan where there was either a rebate or a complete waiver, what administrative costs would you anticipate to implement that? And those are all things, now, I'm not trying to make work for you, but I, I, I think that, you know, I'm guessing there was some good, sound reasons for entering into this, and it's true that, you know, every other service that I have experience with, you don't get to pick and choose when you, when you want to have it and when you don't, because the, the costs outweigh the benefits of that. So, if that's not the case here, then I'd, I'd want to see some compelling evidence that we should be considering a change here. And so I think there's a lot of information that's missing if we're really serious about second guessing something that, and, and we should second guess it if there's good reason, and I don't have a good sense of how many people are concerned about this.
Do you, is there any information about experiences of other communities with our similar demographic?
I, you know, that's a whole different animal we're getting into at that point then, because...
You know, that's a whole different animal we're getting into at that point then because I don't know what other cities have for infrastructure, what they don't have. I don't know if they've ran two miles of water main in their downtown. I don't know where we are. We can certainly ask, but that becomes conjectures to, well, which ones would you use? Do they have to be college towns? Do they have to be just the same size? Are there issues with water in Western Iowa versus Eastern Iowa? I mean, there, there's a lot of variables that go into that. We can certainly try and gather everything here, talking about Edie. I haven't, hadn't had any complaints at all. It was a couple individuals that came in and asked for it to be discussed. We knew it'd been brought up in the past. There's not a massive amount of people coming in and talking about it. At least I've not heard, less staff has had those calls. So I think it's a very, very few people that are asking about it, but it was brought up in the past. We thought it'd be worth discussing again, just to have that discussion before a lot of individuals determine they're going to leave for the winter. As far as how many individuals, I don't know how, we'll figure that out. We can sure look at that because right now they're paying a base fee. Doesn't mean they're gone. That means they're just not using above what the base fee allows. So we can sort of try and dig into that. I think it's going to be difficult to pull some of it though.
I would think a perusing of the data on usage would tell you pretty quickly how sizable number that are not using very much.
Right.
You, you pay a base fee for the meter and then you pay usage on top of that. If they're not paying usage or very minimal, I would say it's a pretty good indication that they're not living in the home. Back to Edie's question, this is a, a common question that I've gotten every time I've walked around neighborhoods during each of my campaign cycles and I try to walk neighborhoods in between of those and maybe I just have folks that are fortunate enough to be able to get out of Iowa in the winter. But, you know, Mike brings up a good argument, yeah, we've got fixed costs and their argument is, I'm not here to use it, so why am I being forced to pay it? I'm not here to use recycling. I'm not here to use the things that need that. You know, it's, it's a valid question. If I'm here using it, maybe I should pay a little bit more for it. Maybe the fee structure needs to accommodate some of that. Again, how many complaints? I would encourage us not to look at this as a complaint driven. People have questions, they ask and they're told no, or they're told you need to pay a plumber service call to take your meter out. You need to pay a service call to put it back in. You need to pay $25 to have your garbage can picked up. If they're not going to be gone more than 90 days, it's not worth them to go through that effort, so.
It's a valid question. I, I understand that, but I, I guess I'll also say that I think those people who have the financial wherewithal and can afford to have homes in more than one place or apartments or whatever it is, are then shifting the costs, if, if in fact, that's why it'd be good to know too. Do the fees more or less cover the overhead and other fixed cost expenses that we have or not? I mean, if, if we're overpriced, then let's adjust it. Or if we're underpriced, let's adjust it. But why should those people who maybe can't afford to, you know, move somewhere else for four, six months of the year, why should the cost then be shifted to them rather than those who have the choice of going somewhere else, pay those fees? I guess that, that's where, that's where I'd like to know if, and it may not be entirely accurate, but even if you have a general sense of, you know, what, what, what are those fees covering or where would we be and how would we have to re-shift charges or reallocate charges if, if we didn't have that, that income from, from those people?
I, I'd just like to add to what Edie said. I, I think what we're, the, the question here really, in my mind at least, isn't should all of the fees be waived? It might be that we need to take a look and say, are the base fees appropriate? Because if people are gone, obviously they're not going to be paying the usage fees because they're not using anything. So maybe what we're really talking about is are, are the base fees higher than it needs to be to cover the, the fixed costs of providing the access to city services to their property? And if those base fees are too high, then yeah, maybe they should be adjusted. But I think that waiving, totally waiving the fees is, is really not a practical solution for, for a lot of reasons. Fees are going to be reduced because people aren't using it, if they're not going to be paying the usage part of it. But, you know, maybe we, it's, it's a good time to take a look and say, are those base fees really appropriate? How were they originally set? Are they covering our costs? What are they supposed to be covering? And I'm not sure who would be in charge of actually taking a look at those numbers, but I think that would be more reasonable rather than saying, you know, should we be waiving fees entirely?
We're entering the snowbird season and it's an opportune time for the next six months at least, if they're to track the number of inquiries as to, can I get some fees waived on water and sewer and? With gas and electricity, you're not going to be turned off.
While snowbirds is definitely a, you know, big part of this concern, we've got college kids who leave for three months in the summer. I mean, it's not like that's the only example of people who are gone. And, you know, if we're going to, we're going to have to be a consistent policy, it's going to affect anyone who kind of has that reason to be out of town for three or more months.
Again, I don't know what the right answer is, so it's good that we're talking about it again. I just saw that when we went through the solid waste fees and came up with the ever, every other week, yellow lids, to me that was a step in the direction of pay for use. I just think there's room to do that on our other services and.
Okay. Any other discussion on this particular topic?
We'll gather all weekend.
Okay, very good.
And see what we can provide for you. Thank you.
Welcome. Next item on, for discussion is the discussion on the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Owner Occupied Housing Rehabilitation Grant Proposal, Proposal for 2019. Bill, I think this is your.
Sure. So we've, we're asking the, the council to consider whether we should go ahead and do the exact same application that we did last year, with the idea that we missed the qualification for that by about 0.25 points. So instead of being, everybody that got a 20 last year got, and we got a 19.75 average. What they, what we lost is one point for community involvement and what that has translated to be is whether the city actually puts some money into the program and does itself, like a, and what the, what CD, what InterCOC is recommending is that we actually look at contributing $15,000 to the program. If you have six, if you have six people that get the grant, that would be $150,000. So we'd be paying 10% towards that. So that's what they're recommending. I'm not sure, you saw the scoring sheet that was in the package, which means two people scored us and their scores were very close to mine. So I'm not sure why we were short in, but we could also do it exactly the same way with no match and see if we got it this year instead of not getting it this year.
There weren't any other areas in the scoring though that I noticed that we had any real control over to change anything, is, is that correct?
Right. Because we, I mean, the readiness of the community, I'm not sure. We had pre-applications and things, so I think we were okay with that. It just happened to be a discrepancy between the two scores. Same thing with the, and that's the one that, those two were the only ones that really changed. So I don't know if it works or not.
Did the other approved grants all have matches of some kind?
I, I didn't look that far. I think they, the fact that they recommended that we do it probably means that at least a lot of them did, had some kind of match.
Were, were we aware that that might be one of the determining factors when we made the application?
I, I don't believe so. I don't recall that they said, you should put something towards this. I think they basically said, you should just apply for this. And I, I really think there are ones that got it that didn't and it, I don't know how to explain that. When you have this small number of points that are, that are given and you have two people scoring these, it becomes a little bit arbitrary maybe.
And yeah, next year could be two different people, correct? I mean.
It, it could. I don't, I, I really didn't get into it that deep in the woods that much because I know InterCOC does a, a number of them for different cities and they know, I know they got some other cities that got the grants. We may be perceived as one not nearly as deserving in some respects because our, our percentage of these kinds of homes is probably not as high as some of the ones that did apply.
And that probably changes from year to year as well.
It could be, yep, depending on who you're up against.
Yeah.
When you look at the other category, we scored very low in, was the percentage of LMI homeowners in the project area. So we can't really change that. If their communities had a slightly higher level than that, that could have been the difference in the points there alone. Everywhere else I felt like we were as close we're going to be, but that's just something we can't change. The community, we either have it or we don't. And again, I think that's where some of this goes, that we're talking about, are we deserving or not? Do we have the funding to do it? That may be one of the deciding factors as well. So that could have pushed some communities over that have more of that than what we may have.
And that, the, the item that was, that we were deficient on is the rank of the community involvement level in other housing community improvement activities. So I'm not sure, it may be that they were doing other LMI housing in other communities and, you know, our, our, our contribution to Waverly Lofts, if you factor that in, actually that was a fairly substantial commitment, which may, we may end up, you know, I don't know how, what, what we'll end up at the end doing with that, but we don't have a lot of other projects going on recently other than that.
The, the information, for example, on the Waverly Lofts, was that included in the application packet?
It, it wouldn't have been, although I think, you know, you're talking about a department that would have known about the, what we've done.
Right.
These aren't big departments in the sense of, I think they kind of know what communities are doing.
Is it possible that was somehow not current enough that kind of they weren't counting it, but maybe it'll be on the accounting for next year?
I, I think it should have been, I think it should have been real current. I think, I think it should have been the perfect timing for that because they should have seen that we made a substantial contribution in the year before this was applied for. I don't know if that makes a difference or not. I don't, I mean, again, these are numbers, you know, you can get a one or a two. Those are not much difference when it comes down to it, so.
Quarter point.
When I saw the material in the packet, the first thing that came to my mind is, boy, we stuck a bunch of money into a dry run to get these houses out of this.
Yeah, I was going to say.
How much more could you invest in our community development than what we did to make these houses eligible for this program?
And I wasn't sure how that worked because if we did 15,000, I guess we just deduct that from, or they deduct that from what they give us the grant for, the maximum grant? I don't, you know, I don't, I don't know. And frankly, this is one of those that is, is real InterCOC driven because they have multiple ones and they have somebody assigned in their department that basically does this. And it's a kind of a specialized thing, so we rely upon them to really do the legwork, although we did a lot of work on the ground as far as doing the, the surveys and the paperwork and all that kind of things. They do the, the basic grant writing and that kind of thing. So I can only go by what they're really requesting from us because I, trying to get in the weeds on whether we did or didn't do the right thing, I don't know for sure.
What expense would we anticipate to produce another grant?
Well, we don't have to pay anything. It would just be time and effort spent on our.
So we would put it together?
Well, the InterCOC still does it because InterCOC gets, the, the grants include amount to pay for InterCOC and then we get the loan money to, for our people. So they actually pay the fee and it's, we don't pay a fee if we don't get the grant. So we didn't really put any money except for our time.
So what is the 21,000, sorry, if I could just finish the InterCOC. So what is the 21,000, what's it called? What did I see there? $21,000 grant manag, grant administration charge?
They, they get to charge that, but the state pays them directly.
I see. Okay. So we're not paying them for that?
We're not paying that.
Okay. Sorry, whomever I.
Well, we've taken part in this program before and I don't know, obviously it wasn't so in this position, whether we had had to chip in some funds for that or not.
I know that we had some excited people because we had seven pre-applications and I hate to, to kind of leave them in the lurch that if we could get, go back one more time and do this, that maybe those seven, or six of those seven, because obviously they only give you six, but that's a pretty good number to have pre-qualified. If we only had two or three, I'd say it wasn't worth the effort, but since we had enough pre-qualified that we could possibly get all six grants.
And it's a big advantage to those people, right?
Right. Well, you, you're talking about the houses in that area that, that were, that were applying for this, you know, $25,000, whether it be roofs or windows or things that would really improve their, their housing and, and improve the looks for everybody and, and everybody wins.
Well, I, I think it's a great program and, you know, it fits in exactly with what we're trying to do in that neighborhood. The fact that we lost out by the skin of our teeth, I mean, but such a very, very tiny sliver tells me that, you know, applying again for another time makes a whole lot of sense. And if it would be to our advantage to kick in some city funds, I mean, we put a lot of money into other things, $15,000 is not a whole lot of money to be able to get $150,000 of grants to fix up some of these houses. I, I think that that would be an investment that would be returned to the city in spades. So I, I would feel very comfortable in directing the staff to, you know, give it another shot and see if we have better luck next year. What we, everybody ahead of us has gotten their grants, so we should be first in line next year.
And keep in mind, we expected to have this be like the first of maybe two or three or four because we wanted to go to different regions.
Yeah.
Because we had geographically limited ourselves, so we were going to start and then move around. You're going to probably get the expectation from the staff down there that we'd do it every time. So I think it's maybe that idea that if we do it, if that's what it costs, then we'll have to count on that happening every time.
I agree with what Rod said too.
Yeah, I will third that. I know $15,000 may not be a major amount and the overall scheme of things is in my checkbook, but it would need to come from somewhere. Do we have any idea where we would, do we have a line item for that?
We just have to factor it into borrowing probably.
Now, if I'd borrow for it, we'd have to locate it somewhere. It could be economic, it could be some area that we can locate that.
So.
Because we would only come up with it if in fact we were awarded the grant, which we will not know until the spring. So maybe by the time it starts, we could budget accordingly and not have to expend until July 1st. That would be the goal because if we didn't get it, wanted to apply again, it'd be nice to have that budgeted this time so we're not behind the ball again going forward. So, so either way, I would budget for the next year if council chooses to do that come budget time. And in the meantime, we may be able to locate it if the grant actually does come through.
And we'd probably just then add it to our, I mean, if it's going to be budgeted in the future, just through the community development area. We've had accounts of those when we were doing the flood buyouts and things, so.
My only hesitation or caution, I guess, is, well, it's a great program and we've been able to utilize it, utilize it in the past. Incentifying residential construction has been a topic that's come up in Economic Development Commission many times and the group is hesitant to go into that realm just because we seem to have strong developers in the community, those type of things. I think if we would do this, we would have to very clearly differentiate this from any other incentives. So the, the next contractor that wants to put in a new subdivision doesn't think I can get 10% of my project, those types of things. So I think we need to be real clear that this is to help revitalize the flood plain area. We're not really incentivizing residential construction.
And it's directly for LMI people because that, it is an income qualified grant program.
And I would put it out there, this is really matching funds to acquire that grant. So if there's a developer can put in 10%, help us get 90% in a grant form, I'd do that all day long. So that's how I guess I would present it to them is this.
But it would still have to meet these other requirements.
Absolutely.
I mean, the LMI, yeah.
Absolutely.
And that's probably the distinction is we're helping others get grant funding, those type of things, not just the last dollar in on bank financing that type of thing.
Yes, sir. And we certainly have done matching grants for other programs as well, so this is somewhat consistent with that. If we didn't, it'll help us acquire that money by. If we think it'll help us acquire that money by doing this whole match, so.
Again, we've got some very energized contractors in town here. I'd hate to send the wrong message to that group because they are putting a lot of new housing on the market that has been pointed out in several studies that being needed and they're matching up very well with what the new generation seems to want, so I'd hate to see this be considered, we're not supporting them, those type of things.
Oh, sorry if I, if you don't mind if I interject, but this is like a five-year loan that if the homeowner stays there for five years, it's forgivable. So it shouldn't be a quick turnover and try to have resale to compete with the new developments or anything.
I'm just curious how you measure the level of readiness the community shows. We only got a three and a 3.5. I mean, if, what would we need to do to look more ready? Sounds like we're ready.
Well, we had done our homework when we, when we did the application because we had done the pre-application part of it. That was the boots-on-the-ground thing that we did with going actually door-to-door to try to get information and even people that didn't qualify in that area, they had to, we had to get a certain number of people who provided their income information, which isn't always real easy to get somebody to do if they're not applying for anything. But we were able to do that by convincing them that they would be helping their neighbors. Even the, because, and it wouldn't be obviously known who was doing that.
But Mike's asking, what else can we do to raise that score?
I don't know, there's a whole lot left. I mean, I think we've done everything that we could do. I really don't think.
Well, I kind of think that's his point is, you know, it should be higher than that. I mean, I really feel like if we were to take the same bloody application and just Xerox it and resubmit it, we should have a good chance of getting accepted. It's not really clear why this wasn't accepted. I, I'm a little frustrated that somehow we're feeling the need to throw this extra dollars in to make it a better application when it seems like it's already a pretty darn good application in the first place.
We, we can't do everything the same. We can't just, because we can use the survey information because it's good for at least two years. That's, that's the part that's hard to do. The pre-application things, we think we shouldn't have any problem with those seven people wanting to do that. And we may even be able to add more, which I think on the left, the person on the left said only seven pre-apps, but all verified. They were saying our numbers were low. What we'd probably work on getting is more apps and that might help our score on his side as opposed to the other side. So if you got a half point from him on that side, the other one didn't matter, so.
That could be some of the readiness is you have more people than necessary and you have a pool to draw from, so that could be one of the factors. Certainly try to push harder to get there.
I guess I'm going to come back again to if we had scored 10 on this scale, I would be a little bit hesitant about going back and doing it, but we were a quarter of a point, the closest we could be without, you know, getting the grant. I certainly think it's worth taking another shot at.
And I'll just be quite blunt and say though, I don't, I'm not sure whether they were measuring it by what the score was or how many people they had at a certain level.
Right.
Because it could have been everybody was in the, you know, we don't know whether 20 is going to be the number next year.
Yeah.
And that, that's the only thing I worry about because I think it's, how many, how many grants do they give? When they get to that amount, that's where that number starts or stops.
I agree.
I'd like to do it again, whether we put the money towards it or not, because I think we'd like to take a chance. Even if say we didn't do the money, we probably would try it again just because we try to make our case that we felt we did these things.
I guess I would, to at least some degree, pay attention to what Intercog said. They have a lot of experience with this. They've seen a lot of applications, they've written a lot of applications. And if their recommendation is to invest $15,000, I guess I didn't, if we've not done that before, I guess I would, would go ahead and give that a shot.
And I would also say that I wouldn't want to not put the money in, submit a proposal, get turned down again and then come back the year after that and then put the money in. I mean, it feels like, you know, I don't want this to become a perennial application that we're putting in, so.
My guess is that the staff down in Des Moines talks with the staff at Intercog and gives them recommendations as to what to do to score better.
Any other points of discussion on the CDBG grant application?
It sounds like I'll bring it back and you can vote it, you can vote it on that.
Very good. Thank you. Let's move on to item number three, the status of the streetscape planning process. I'm not sure who's making the presentation. Looks like Mr. Bill.
Well, I'll tell you that Larry Kurtz was able to do a presentation to our streetscape committee. Steve Egli is here. He was the, he's the chairman of the Chamber Streetscape Committee. You're co-chairman, I think, aren't you?
Yeah, with End of the Off.
Right, right. And Paul is here, she was part of that, and Travis is here from the Chamber. And so what we wanted to do was Larry presented a follow-up to his two-years-ago-type presentation before we started the project and wanted to give us an update on what has been, I think the committee had asked for specific dollar amounts for the types of things that we were looking at. So if they were looking at benches or planters or trees, they wanted to know some kind of cost, like per unit type of thing. So as soon as this comes up, it's a little slower, we'll go to that. So what we're looking at is the preliminary design and cost analysis. This is the first picture that was shown on this presentation. It was a drone video of what's already, the new construction. And then the kind of configuration of the blocks that on, that first street on the east side. So it kind of showed where our bumpouts are now and where the crosswalks are going to be, where the brick strip is, and then where potentially trees and benches might Talking about each corner being different because there's, there's fire hydrants, there's intakes, there's, there's hand, where you reach in where the wires are. There's all kinds of things that would make each corner be a little bit different. There was definitely a desire for some street trees, meaning that some of those trees would be placed within the brick strip or at least in that area, but they would be generally speaking closer to the intersections. This was a picture of, also showing the tree guards that would be recommended. Talked about what, how much soil is there to grow a tree. They gave us some ideas about wanting to make sure that we made the trees so that they survived. And I think there's some detail on that which I think is, is relevant for the person who's doing the project, but it gives you an idea as to, they want to make sure there's enough space for that. Now underneath the bricks, they can make that work. So what happens is that's why we want to put those in the brick strip. The closer you get to the intersection though, the brick strip doesn't go as far as what they expected it to go as far as going into the bumpout because it stopped before you got to the bumpout for a lot of reasons, including the street light fixtures and everything else that was in that intersection.
So why is it, why does it work with the brick, but it doesn't work under concrete, you're saying? Is that the deal?
Right. Because it can be, because the bricks are permeable and you can.
Water will get through.
Water can get through those.
But does it, what, I'm still concerned about the root structure of a tree. And I understand a lot of cities put trees downtown and they don't survive because the roots don't know where to go. Is that true? Is that true, Tab?
I think Tab isn't, if you're more, if you have more space, go in each direction because they don't tend to go straight down, they tend to spread out.
Yeah, exactly.
And so it's, it's really providing enough soil on each, on each side of that tree in order for it to survive. And they wanted to make sure that we optimized that. And they're talking about putting in the tree guards to protect the trees, kind of hold them up, protect them from wind, also from bikes and things that would be hooked up to them or run into. They have different kinds of guards. Basically, we've been through some of this before, but they had identified two different kinds of trees, the crimson spiroake and the, and then the other was the ginkgo bolloa. And then Tab, you had one more, a third one?
We're looking at crimson century Norway maple.
So we'd have a, and the idea was to have at least three different kinds of trees so that they'd be, if you lost one type of tree, you'd have the other two types of trees that would survive. And that would also put some difference in not having everything be completely uniform. So the tree, there's the cost of healthy trees. Just looking at per tree, it's about $4,200 when you look at the tree itself, the tree guard, the silvocells, the soil, the brick and labor, taking that out and putting them back in. So you're talking about 20 trees, they were estimating maybe $84,000. Again, the numbers are based on the units though, you'd look at that unit of $4,200 per tree if you're doing it right. The planters, this is a picture of the type of planter that we have some of those now. And the thought was that we could increase the numbers of planters depending upon where we want to put them and, and how many we want to take care of. And so I think that's, I think that was a popular item to keep in the mix. You talk about the different kind of planters that they were talking about us doing. You can see that the planters are about $2,800 when you're talking about a planter, whether you have soil in it with plants or whether you have public art or if you have something else in the middle of that planter. The planter itself is about $1,000, but the plants and the rest of that add to it. So that's $2,800 per planter with plants. The larger ones are things that you might put in, and this was just examples that they were trying to give you as to what the cost might be for different planters of this kind. So the large ones have, they're wider, they have, they're not for seats and you'd be about $2,100 per, per large planter. The benches and the garbage cans that we have, whether you have something like this, they told us that the benches that you could have different kinds of them, but that the benches would probably be in that range no matter what you picked. So if you picked a different style or if you had a mixture of those, it's still going to be about that much to buy a bench. And then the garbage can, you talked about whether you have a garbage can or whether you have recycling also, containers. Those can be different, done different ways, but this kind of garbage can, if we were to repeat that throughout the downtown, they're about $1,800. This is another bench that was, just, just to give you some idea, there's other types of benches, depends on how you put them out, whether you put them out with or without cushions. It was the idea that this might be used in front of some of the storefronts if they wanted to have one in front of their place and they would take care of it and bring the cushion in and out as opposed to the city doing that. So the preliminary budget and the placeholder values you see are for the street trees, the double bench planters, the large round planters, benches, garbage cans. And we come up with about $238,680 based on the numbers that are projected. And that was to kind of look at the downtown from about Fourth on the east to about Fourth Street on the west. So you're, you're trying, talking about spreading those out in a way that would, would provide good coverage on both sides. You see the drone video from, from way up above. As you get closer, you can kind of get an idea, especially on the first street, you see how barren it is and how we're really intending to want to put planters and baby trees on the, by the bumpouts, different things. And the vision is to do something that looks a little bit like that. And I believe that's, well, okay, yeah, so this. One of the things that was pointed out is that I believe the person who bought the pavers that was underneath the street, they are, they do exist and they are actually in somebody's, and, and they are potentially available for some of, some work that we could do in the downtown.
That's not the guy. Just clarify that.
So that was just their funny picture, by the way.
Where do you find that picture?
Wherever you find pictures, on the internet, right? So the other thing that they're, that they're really recommending for our downtown is, is something that isn't necessarily a cookie cutter type of thing that we would do for streetscape. It's really encouraging in some way the merchants downtown to do what some of them are already doing. And it's come up with a vignette in, in front of their stores. And they can be very creative from this nice little thing that Christine had when she was on that side of the, on the Big Six, and she's done some things on her side now that she's moved over, to maybe in front of Jim's having a big duck blind thing or whatever it is that, that kind of accentuates what's in the store there at the sports shop, that type of thing. And it's really coming up and helping people be more creative about using that four-foot strip that's near the building. Because if you look back at, you know, how we did our sidewalk, we put four foot by the building that sometimes wasn't removed, sometimes had to be removed and put back. But sometimes that's a little slanted, not really great to walk on. And so what we hoped that people would do is use that for decoration, use that for sandwich boards, use it for the vignettes, the things that makes it more comfortable. And it's really pretty creative and pretty unusual. When you go to most communities, they're not going to have that individualistic of a presentation. And so we were looking at ways that maybe we could, we could assist with that. I think the Chamber is talking about that too. How could we encourage people, whether it be giving good advice or, or maybe even some, some small grants to help with those types of ideas? Again, there's, I guess that's, that's the other side when they moved to their side, so they did it one side and then did the other side. And I know that, you know, and that Renewed Purpose has done some of that, there's others that have done really nice things with those things. And I do think it's pretty creative. And it leaves an eight-foot sidewalk that's ADA compliant for everybody to walk on without having to worry about those things by the building. And the bricks again themselves turned into that transition period or place, and those are sometimes slanted and things that was necessary to get the proper slope down to the curb. We still have eight foot to use that we would not let anybody be inside of. We want that eight foot to be a clear span walk, but those, that four-foot strip could really be used for some creative things. So what we're doing is basically bringing it back to remind you that these are things that the streetscape committee would like to do, would like to move forward with. And this is one of those things that we think that the city can, can provide some assistance. I'll tell you, I'll give you one more thing then, just to, and we can start discussing some of this, but as a part of streetscape. We walked, we talked about banners and we have brackets and the Chamber is talking, is voting on.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow on banners. And this is the staff's recommendation for those that has been provided to all the board members. What we would expect is to have, that would be kind of an equal number of all the colors and they would be mixed up. So you wouldn't have a block of one color and a block of another color. It would just be every third one, you'd change after every three. We like the color. It's a lot brighter when, yeah, it's brighter on the screen up here than what it is on my computer here. But we think that's going to be a great addition. Those would probably, would be installed probably next spring. So what are your questions about? So what are your questions about what we're looking at?
Bill, early in your presentation, there was a mention of stained concrete crosswalks. Is that part of what you're looking at, or are we just simply going to have painted striped crosswalks?
Just paint.
Okay.
Yep. I mean, it was, it's, when you have a state highway, that's difficult to do. There still could be staining on the bump out. And, you know, that's one of those things, like, when I was coming here tonight, I was sitting in the, in the through lane over by the law firm, and somebody came on my right and drove right over the curb and crossed the bump out and took a right. We really want them to see those things so they don't drive over them. And so whether it be planters, which I think is usually, they use them as barriers for pedestrians. So there may be some, a recommendation to put planters out farther on the, I mean, not right to the edge, but at least on the bump out so that you have some definition of where that bump out is. And that would, that's what generally the landscape architects would recommend. And that's actually a protection. So somebody can't drive up the sidewalk.
Was that intentional, or they didn't see it?
I think they're just frustrated and want to get through the intersection and...
Yeah. It truly was a mess this afternoon. I sympathize with anyone that had to drive through. I was trying to get home and I ended up going all the way over by Parlington Cemetery to get from my office to my house, so...
But I think we have to remember that's because we've got a zillion and two cones out there.
And there's blinking red lights downtown, four-way stops and everything else.
Those blinking red lights at Second and Third are something that the DOT requires before they open up the road. And that's something they do on...
Well, there will be an adaptation period for all of this, including the bump outs. But I guess I would encourage, again, my old song, you know, about pedestrian crossings, I think will also apply to vehicular traffic here, that once we've had a reasonable period of adaptation, we need to tick it. I mean, you know, if people are driving over bump outs and passing in the turning lane and, you know, if, yeah, I mean, that just, things won't work that way. And it's dangerous.
I think if we get all the street open, and it's all striped and there's no cones, and the lights are all timed right, and we've changed the lighting, the timing on the First Street light, things will go better. And we just have to be patient this week because we hoped it would be quickly done, but things happen, and it should be done this week to get that open, so. Anything else about Streetscape? I just, any questions?
I don't have any other questions about it, but I did want to say, just because of the confusion surrounding the whole notion of a bike lane, which there isn't, we do have documents here and there, and I, where we use that terminology, I think from maybe an earlier time when we were discussing the possibility of that. But I think we should really try to be consistent in our language use, whether it's on documents and also when we're talking to people. Because there is a lot of confusion about that out there, that people think that there's going to be a bike lane there.
Do the merchants on the, on the street feel excited about the individualized approach?
I think there's quite a few of them that really do. I think it's one of those things where you give them some ideas for the ones who are kind of a little reticent about it, and say, maybe this could work for you. And keep it, keep in mind that we encourage them to do it for advertising purposes in some respects, because if you have a board out there with specials or a sale or something, and it's nice and creative by the, you know, we think that works well. Now, you shouldn't really do it so big that you can see it from the street, but the people walking down the sidewalk at least can see those things. And it makes for a pleasant experience because it's not just so sterile that...
I just think it's really nice, you know, as a very nice German community and as a Norwegian in there, that you have Norway pines, I just want to, Norway, not pines, but maples, yeah. Just a little side note.
They don't make Swedish maples.
No Swedish maples, yeah.
There were all out of German oats.
Comments or questions? Number one, I would, if Edie and I conferred and we agreed that we dealt with sandwich boards in P&amp;Z several years ago, and discouraged those because of the liability, wind blowing them over and people running into them and everything, so I would not, I would not encourage that. Yeah, my other, other comment, and there's probably no one here in the room that will be around when one of those trees reaches 65 to 70 feet tall. But hopefully, you will not allow them to get there. I would anticipate because...
We anticipate about 15-year lifespan on them, that they'll get big enough so we need to remove them and replace them.
That's, that's the problem. If you, if you get one that grows, and then you get big enough, then people want to preserve it and they don't want to cut it down. But really, there are things that have to be culled and then another one put in. I mean, it's, that's the way it should work.
My other, my other question, my other question is, nowhere in this plan do I see anything for artwork.
Actually, what we talked about was that the planters could actually just be planters that have artwork in them. So for the downtown, you'd want to put that...
Sculptures, you mean?
Yeah, sculptures and that kind of thing. I don't think they're not doing it intentionally, because there was some discussion about having artwork in different places. It would just have to fit. Because if you have artwork that's going to, that people are going to run into, you have to kind of protect where that artwork is. And we have a limited amount of space on the sidewalks. And so, again, the planters might be the best opportunity in the mid-block area or on the bump out area for artwork. And you're talking about the sculptures and that kind of thing.
Well, I've always been a big fan of walking around downtown Iowa City and seeing kind of the quotes from literature kind of in the sidewalk now, you know, here and there. And I would love to see some kind of sidewalk art quotes. Now, I don't know what we would use as our kind of personal footprint on that. I mean, I believe in downtown Des Moines, they've got all the different counties of the state of Iowa. I don't know if we want to have something where we have, you know, famous Waverly natives and kind of their squares in the concrete. But I would love to see something to encourage people to walk through downtown and explore, and kind of looking for little, you know, all the hidden, you know, footprints, or, you know, things in the concrete. Tab?
The Leisure Services Commission reviewed this presentation last night, and in a general sense, they recommended to the general concept. They know it takes a lot of tweaking yet, there might be some additional ideas. I actually thought Brian's idea was good about putting everything, some things on the sidewalk. I've seen that before as well. I'm thinking math equations.
I could do it. I could do it.
The, there was some concern about the bump outs. Some folks were a little concerned about safety pedestrians in the bump outs, but I think if we put some things in a way, that will help that out. But Leisure Services heard that last night, and you asked, why does Leisure Services have a say in this? Well, we do the central business district in terms of maintenance, so we want to make sure that the whole thing's maintainable.
The yellow paint will be around the bump outs when it's finished, when they get it finished and...
Well, I would also say in terms of the planters, there's a balance between those planters providing protection and the planters hiding pedestrians and making them difficult to see. So, yes, we need to kind of find that balance between kind of protecting the pedestrians and then them being hidden.
That's kind of a, something that the, when a landscape person who's used to doing things for streets like this, they kind of know that, and they kind of had that idea that you have to be able to get a couple steps away and get visible, but you can run back and hide if you have to. But, and really, this is really a placeholder type discussion tonight. You can see how they calculate what is going to be asked of you in a project ask. And so when you go to your budget, your discussions, we're just looking at some allocation of priority for some, some of that Streetscape that we're doing.
I think it'll be good for us, I mean, if it's possible for you to also give us an idea of, okay, what does less than this look like potentially? Like, what would, what would a Plan B be, or what would a, what would a range be? You know, if we find ourselves in a situation of not being able to budget $300,000, you know, for this, you know, what would the, what would the next best thing look like? Or the next best two things? I mean, or just give us some idea of what, what the best thinking is on that.
I think Larry indicated that it would not necessarily be proportional, because you may decide to start with certain things, that you have all of them for the planters, but not all of the trees, or vice versa. I mean, however you're going to do it, it wouldn't just be proportionally reducing the number of each thing.
Okay.
But it could be that way. And I think what they do is just make it work so that if you have allocated a certain amount for the first year, they'll decide what's the best thing to do in that first year, and then you come back in the second year and ask for the next group, so.
One of the items that I've got a quick question on is, how does this lend itself to way signage? I know that's been a topic that's been talked about for years and years, and how do you incorporate way signage into this type of landscape?
I don't know unless you do it something on the sidewalk. I mean, you're talking about sidewalk, signage, that type of thing, or you're talking about...
Telling what businesses are in each block, how to get to the parks, you know, just, signees to get you around the community.
For cars, though, or for pedestrians?
Both.
Both. Well, I think that's the question that apparently has been asked along, a lot of years in this community, and we are not forgetting about that. I think we've talked about that a lot, about, especially with the trails and the things that are going to be hooked up. We'd love to see trail markers, trail signs, maps, that kind of thing. And maps that could include stores. You know, where to get, where to get a sub, where to get ice cream, whatever, that, those are the kind of things we'd like to see.
Bill, can we just take a second to point out something?
Sure.
I just want to make sure, Tab mentioned that Leisure Services have looked over this, generally supportive of this idea. We had a meeting about a month ago with the Streetscape Committee, had about, you know, 15 people in attendance, and went over this in detail with the architects. Present was too bad they couldn't be here, and I don't really understand why not, but because a lot of the questions you have about trees, there's a lot of technology in the design of what's going to go under those trees. We've learned something in the last 10 or 20 years. And by the way, Iowa City, I was just down there this weekend, they're tearing them out, so nobody's perfect when it comes to this stuff.
They're gonna redo, they're gonna redo some.
It's not the simplest thing in the world. But they're essential to take noise away from the street, to give people a buffer from the elements, to give a little shade. They do a lot of things for you there, so. And Edie, you mentioned that, you know, Plan Bs and other, this, this plan they came up for, for these blocks, I think the amenities we're talking about, from trees to the tree guards, which double as bike racks, and the other types of things we're talking about, we regard it as pretty minimum. I mean, this is, this is about the minimum you can do, and achieve a look that gives you something besides a, you know, a major barrier down the middle of your main street. But they're unit priced, so you can, you can start with whatever you want. It's easy to break down in that respect. But I just want you to know that the committee was, you know, widely supportive of going in this direction. I hope that you will be, too. And I think the estimates that you've put into your budgeting and things have been consistent with the figure that they came up with here, in the 200,000 to 300,000 range, something like that is what realistically we need to start with. And the other, the other thing about the concept here, up next to the buildings, we have a four-foot space that the building owners, the storefronts control. They can do what they want. And that's what Bill was showing, some of the examples of what they can do. That's probably a difference from when we were, State Highway, which we're, you know, we're now a little bit changed in status because we have the bypass. So there's a little difference in the regulations that govern what you can do in those spaces, I believe. Maybe I'm misspeaking, but, but anyway, we'll have some space there that we think can make it kind of a unique development, as opposed to cookie cutter, as pointed out. Widely supportive of this and eager to see if we can get some budget to maybe work with, and so, just wanted to make sure. You were aware of the general support of the committee.
Yeah. I get, and I know Tim wants to get in here, but just to, I want to make sure, because again, there's so many rumors out there that we are still, that Braemer is still Highway Three. It's still, it's still a state highway. And I think we've always had the four-foot, that's nothing new. The four feet in front of the businesses has always been an area within which they could do something else if they wanted. Just at different points in time, we've encouraged and discouraged different things, you know, and that's okay. But I don't think any of the regulations or laws or roads have changed, yeah.
No, we've, we can, we've been able to control that four-foot strip, and especially now that it's kind of sloped compared to the rest of the sidewalk. It's kind of a nice place to keep people from maybe going on that area that's sloped as opposed to being the ADA compliant eight-foot sidewalk.
Yeah. No. My only, my only comment was kind of addressing when the mayor asked about artwork or even some of the planters. I know the school has done some art. We have the one sculpture in Coleman, right, Tab? And the food collection things here and at the library were both done with the school, so I almost wonder if, talking with them, if something, to give them a planter each year that they could decorate, or something that would be a piece of artwork, that each year there's something, it's a new project for them to work on that would fit in with that kind of a program? They've done some nice things for the community already, and it would be a nice tie-in as well.
Sure. And keep in mind, the planters that we've, I mean, I think there was nine or something, there wasn't very many. They're really a mid-block planter in the first, between First and Second, and Second and Third. And, you know, it was the idea that we wanted to put some decoration in the middle between the lights. And then the ones on the, on the bump outs were really the protection ones. And, and so it's, you can add more as you go, but this is kind of the minimal starting point for what we want to see happen.
I suppose I just wanted to chime in and say, we have, it's been a rough two years of construction for our downtown merchants. So putting a little money forward is what we can do to kind of encourage people coming back downtown, I would see as money well spent, and kind of just payback for all the trouble we've caused them with the construction.
Any other? Thank you, Bill, for the update, presentation. Reports from boards and commissions. Bremer Waverly Law Board minutes, September 10th, 2018. Received into record. Bremer Waverly Law Board minutes, October 8th, 2018. Received into minutes. Staff comments?
I don't believe they have any tonight, sir.
Okay. Council comments?
Well, I suppose I will be at the Wooden Foot after the meeting, for anyone who wants to share a beverage with me. I would encourage just a little bit more patience in dealing with the construction. I also was stuck in Braemer Avenue construction, all the way from, I think it was Sixth Avenue or Sixth Street West, all the way across the river. It was a mess. It seems like they had removed the left turn lane here at the First Street on the east side of the river, and that was part of it, but that's just part of construction. So part of construction is, traffic is horrible. And I know there's lots of people who are blaming the three-lane configuration on the problems, but I think it's just the construction, and once the construction is done, which, you know, knock on wood, will be soon, I think that everything will work itself out. I'm still a firm believer that the three-lane arrangement will be superior, once we all, once it's done, and once we've all figured out how to manage it. But if anyone would like to come and talk to me about it over a beverage at the Wooden Foot, now is your chance.
Any other comments?
I just wanted to say thank you for this opportunity to be part of the city council. It's added to my story as a, as a member of this, this wonderful community, and so thank you for all the learning I...
Good. Thank you for, for your participation, comments, interest, and we'll see what happens.
Yeah, we'll see what happens. Same to Mayor.
Just a quick note of thanks. I see we each have a binder on our desk, or available reports from all the divisions. Got a few minutes to glance at it before the meeting, and it's a good refresher of all the great things that go on in this community, from day-to-day operations as well as projects. Yeah, there's a lot of hard work that goes in by city staff to make the city what it is, and we should appreciate that and thank them for it.
Well, I just want to mention that I spent two weeks going to and coming from New England, and... and after trying to navigate the New Jersey Turnpike, I have to tell you, drivers in Iowa seem to be a pretty placid lot by comparison, and I'm also amazed that by being gone for two weeks, how long Brian Bergen's beard has grown.
Second, or his comment?
Any other council comments? I have just a couple of quick ones, I think. Brian's comment about things embedded in the brick, I think Mike Sheer could be in charge of that process, he has lots of witty sayings and things that would fit right in.
I was looking forward to the mathematical formula.
Other thing is, well, a couple, you know, 29th is Halloween here in Waverly, downtown, they're all over the city. There's a couple other ones, one at Bartle's Home, and, and one with the merchants at different days, but otherwise, celebrate Halloween in a safe and, safe way, and don't eat too much candy. There've been some comments about the group of people boycotting, and, or asking people to boycott the downtown merchants. I would encourage that not to happen. I would, as soon as the barricades are down, and we can get somewhat back to a normal situation, I would encourage everyone to, to show, show the merchants our support from the, from the citizens of Waverly. And once those barricades and cones come down, don't expect the immediately smooth traffic because there's some things that need to be done to the traffic lights to coordinate everything, and so anticipate some problems, and hopefully we don't have too many accidents for the police department to, to report on, but sure we'll get through it. End is close. That's all I have, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.